Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the special edition of the Board of Selectmen's Meeting, December 28th. Hope everybody had a Merry Christmas. We have a fairly light agenda. With some background noise. Six o'clock, we'll have citizens input, six oh five, we have a public hearing, acceptance of provisions of the MGL Chapter 138, Section 33B, Sales of Alcoholic Beverages by On-Premise Licenses on Sundays and Certain Legal Holidays. We have a public hearing notice, six oh five Lafayette House, six ten Bar Louie, six fifteen Davio's, six twenty Skip Jack's, six twenty-five CRGE Foxborough LLC, DBA Toby Keith's, I Love This Bar and Grill, six thirty Bass Pro Shops, DBA Bluefin Lounge, six thirty-five Scorpion Bar, six forty CBS Scene Restaurant and Bar, six forty-five MPS LLC, DBA Gillette Stadium, six fifty New England Patriots, Chatabell Foundation. They have a bunch of action items. And we'll get into more detail on the individual hearings as they come up. Chris, will you leave us now?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little bit after six, anybody here for citizens input? Doc, you want to read the public hearing notice?
Yep, sorry, I didn't pull it up yet. There it is. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, December 28th, 2017, beginning at 6:00 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, 40 South Street, on acceptance of the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 33B, Sales of Alcoholic Beverages by On-Premise Licenses on Sundays and Certain Legal Holidays between 10:00 AM and 12:00 PM for the following establishments: Bass Pro Shops, DBA Bluefin Lounge, Bar Louie, Skip Jack's Seafood Emporium, MPS LLC, Doing Business As Gillette Stadium, New England Patriots Chatabell Foundation, Davio's Northern Italian Steakhouse, CBS Scene Restaurant and Bar, Scorpion Bar, Lafayette House, and Toby Keith's I Love This Bar and Grill. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Being at six oh five Lafayette House, 1784, approval and extension of liquor license hours to serving accompanied by food at 10:00 AM on Sundays.
Good evening. So I want to get the 10:00 AM license even on non-Patriots games. Because like if there's something at the stadium, a Revolution game, someone wants to start a bridal shower, baby shower, they want to start earlier, and then I have to say, no, can't sell alcohol till noon. And then they don't do the event, they go somewhere else. And if you have to come in every time for a special permit, you don't know if you're going to be granted it. So you can't, you know, it's the chicken or the egg issue. On the other side of the coin, on night football games, the game starts at 4:30, I close at 4:30. The game starts at 8:30, I close at 8:30. New Year's Eve, I close at 10:00 o'clock. So I'm proactive on the obvious side of a potential problem because they've been to a game, I don't know where they've been. If I'm closed, I know they haven't been at my place. And also, it's to help out the police and fire because, you know, they're coming in a big area, and I'm basically the last one on the strip. If they don't have to respond to an incident at my place, it just makes it a little easier on them, you know, whether it's the ambulatory or, you know, situation. I don't need my bathrooms remodeled. And then Mother's Day, Easter, you know, I can do 10:00 on all those days. It just makes it more fluid for the business. And obviously on the football games, you know, like this Sunday, we have people wanting to come at 10:00 o'clock, and they go, well, I can't. And I think way back when, it might not have been procedurally correct, but way back when, we did open at 10:00 on game day, providing they bought food. And we would continue that policy anyway. You know, I have no intention or interest in opening the bar. You know, like if there's a non-Patriots game, I'm not going to open a bar at 10:00 in the morning. The bartender doesn't come in till 11:15, so, you know, it's mostly those baby showers, bridal showers type events, christenings. You know, they get done at the church, and then there's a delay of when they can come. So I'm just trying to eliminate that delay. Any questions?
That's my line. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, do you think maybe it would be appropriate to explain what we're doing? The brunch, we accepted the brunch law at town, maybe, maybe?
Yeah, so, you want to explain? I can explain.
Right, so the reason why this is occurring is the fact that the town meeting, the town of Foxborough accepted the brunch, what is otherwise known as the brunch law, which is the chapter and verse that was cited earlier in the hearing notice this evening. That allows each one of you as licensees to actually amend your license to allow you the ability to serve earlier than 11:00. 11:00 is the statutory limit unless it is otherwise accepted by the town. The town had never accepted that provision formally until this past year. So that was just recently done at the December town meeting, which then therefore allowed each one of you to apply individually to come forward for consideration of that additional hour of opening for that service. So it is therefore incumbent upon you as a licensee to present your reasons why you need to do that, and it's up to the board to determine if it's in the town's best interest, of course, to, and the public's best interest, to grant that extensional extension. So that's the purpose of tonight's process. Each one of you will have your own different reasons why you need to do it, but it's incumbent upon you to present your best arguments forward.
And a public hearing is just a requirement, procedurally.
And one other reason we want to get it is, we're thinking, we did have brunch years ago, and we stopped doing it because of the timing issue. We want to start it back up and open at 10:00 and serve brunch. And all the showers and everything, they get brunch, we do a private brunch for them. So, you know, that's what we're looking for.
Open up the questions from the board?
Actually, I just answered my question, I was wondering if you were going to go to an every Sunday brunch?
Yeah, we had one, I'm going to say it was 20 years ago. Yeah.
Just a question. Bill, the warrant article, so the town voted that establishments can open up at 10:00, predicated on a selectman's approval?
Right.
And there was no stipulation of what type of, there's a restaurant versus straight bar, any liquor stuff?
So within the board's discretion, that's how to approve that.
Okay. Thank you.
Jimmy?
No, one second.
I have a question for Lieutenant Noonan. I think I posed this to Chief Baker when it first became part of the warrant. If he saw it, thought that at 10:00 AM would cause any issues throughout the course of the day, and he indicated that he had no issues with an earlier open, he'd rather see an earlier open rather than extending later. Do you have any thoughts or?
No, I agree with that, I agree with that completely. Obviously, the earlier start is based on having food served in an earlier controlled environment. At the end of the night, obviously that creates different issues. But early in the morning, it's mostly people that are going to be going to some type of luncheon. In the past, they, throughout the town, different locations have had their earlier opens without any incidents, whether it be of a Patriot Place or other establishments within the community. We've never had any type of police incident involved in an establishment that opened early, or in the hindsight, it had something that started early, it would finish at the end. So we've had no problems with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Were there so many of these, would it make sense to have the discussion on all of these and then go back and vote on all of them? Do you want to do it one at a time? I'm wondering if there's going to be something that six hearings later shows up that we don't think about on the first one? Do you have a question and answer? I don't have a strong inclination either way, though.
Is it all covered under one blanket, public hearing? And we're just taking them individually?
Yes, just to have some order to the process, that's all.
We can have each establishment come up and make their case and?
Then the board can actually take one action if you'd like, or you can take, you know, an action that has certain provisions to it.
And we can do that while the public hearings open?
Yes.
And then we can open it up to public comment before we close the public hearing?
Correct.
On all of them and then? Okay.
No, it makes sense. Okay. Six ten, Bar Louie?
Really don't have too much to say, you know, the main reason we're looking to, you know, get this license is to stay competitive with the neighboring communities, things like that. A lot of businesses that, we get a lot of business, you know, obviously on event days and items like that, but on the everyday, it's, you know, that is a place, and, you know, there are certain other areas that kind of take away from, you know, our area as far as that can serve a little bit earlier for brunches for, you know, different, you know, as you were speaking, different events, you know, they, you know, want to set up some kind of bridal shower, you know, baby shower, things like that. It's all we're looking for, just to stay competitive.
And this would be with food?
With food, yes.
So do you guys have plans, if this gets approved, to go ahead and start opening every Sunday at 10:00 AM and?
I mean, nothing has been said in stone. As far as our company goes, we have a brunch program that we've never really been part of, just because it didn't really work for us. It is something that, you know, once we set the word up and, you know, we can get rolling, we can go from there.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Yep.
Six fifteen Davio's?
Hello. I would agree absolutely with what everyone just said. You know, one of our main issues or concerns, I guess, part one would really be game days. It is about having a controlled environment. It is about really knowing what these people are drinking before they walk into your building at 10:00 AM. And with, obviously, the parking lots as well as, you know, the tailgating fiasco, we like to be able to have a little bit more control. You know, all of our servers are tip certified, our managers are tip certified. And on game days and any Sunday, we go very strongly with the law. We still don't serve doubles, we still, as a company, don't serve shots on a game day. And we don't serve two drinks at once, they can't back up their beer with another beer. It takes the time for the server to go and get it. But the reality of it is, we don't like to say no to our guests, ever. So, yeah, we are looking for it every Sunday. Right now, we do have brunch in all of our Massachusetts Davios. They all open at 11:00, and I can't say that with this, we wouldn't be intrigued to start opening at 10:00. The bridal shower, the baby shower, all of that absolutely plays a part as far as the setup goes. A lot of people do like to do brunch between 10:00 and noon. We really don't get to see much of it until about noon to 1:00 because of our licensing. So I think that there's a few valuable reasons as to why to be able to open it up. And certainly, the control is a big part of it.
Questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, do we have to stay along these time slots or can we just?
There's more of a guideline for the board to try and allow people the opportunity to be heard. It's not, they're not listed as part of the public notice. That was more of your, it was more of a guideline for the board for the folks to know that they had to be here for at least a certain time. But you have the ability as chairman to go beyond that, you do have that authority.
So we can just keep?
Keep going.
Skip Jacks?
Good evening, all. Thank you for your time. We've had an established brunch for the last nine, since we've been open. So the brunch starts every Sunday at 10:00, we've got a jazz band, we've got a good crowd. But they do wait for that magic number to hit. It's almost like ringing a bell, everyone claps, you know, this, that, and the other thing. They can get there most in Bloody Mary. So, really, we would like to be able to offer that to the guests earlier for all the same reasons that everyone else has mentioned beforehand. So if you would consider us, we'd be grateful for that. Certainly would enhance our business. I'd like to say that business is so good that we wouldn't need that, but we certainly could use the extra revenue. So if you wouldn't mind, we'd appreciate your consideration.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We haven't had any, what do you call it, incidents with the brunch guests up there, so. Thank you again.
No.
Toby Keith? Want to hear from Toby Keith? Discussion on Toby Keith? Yep.
Out of the establishments I see coming in, I don't know if that's a place that has an established brunch or breakfast or something that goes to the early meals.
Yeah, looking at their letter, they're just looking for December 31st, which would be a Patriots home game. Whether the time would be granted.
They're actually on. You have Toby Keith?
Yes, I am. Sorry, I didn't realize.
You're right in the audio, man.
Thank you.
As you said, just 10:00 AM during Patriots games?
Stole the beer, 6:30, my bad.
It's okay.
We're ahead of schedule.
Fair enough.
So you didn't get to listen to the other establishments go before you? You're just looking for the reasons why you think opening up at 10:00 AM would benefit your establishment? Now, just looking through your letter and just looking really for 10:00 AM on Sundays when the Patriots are playing at 1:00?
Yeah, well, I mean, let's be honest, everyone in the brother is tailgating at 9:00 AM, chugging beers in the parking lot, right? Would you rather have tax revenue coming in this town? And having them monitored by professional staff? Or have them just getting shitfaced in the parking lot? I mean, it's pretty simple to me, like, this is a no brainer. You're going to get tax revenue, and I'm going to make money, and we both win.
So, and my question is, is this just for 1:00 home games for the Patriots? No other?
I mean, the only other game I can think of this year that we did that was the lacrosse championships. And, yeah, I'd love that to be acceptable for that as well, but other than that, I don't see a reason for it. And that's my opinion. And obviously, this, my establishment is one of the bigger ones in this town. So, that's my opinion personally.
Any questions from the board?
So, we could certainly approve it for just home Patriot 1:00 games. Would we need to have them come back if they wanted to, like, just extend that to the lacrosse games or approve that now? I mean, I know we have lacrosse coming up again this year, so it's one, I think we had two years in a row. Should we leave that open-ended or just a thought?
I mean, let's be honest, at the end of the day, would you rather have people getting drunk in the parking lots, which is happening already? Like, without a doubt. Or being monitored by professional staff that won't let them get too intoxicated? And if they do, they're getting taken care of properly, whether it's by my staff, my security, the town, the police, whoever. Or would you rather them just do whatever they want in the parking lots? So, to segregate it, Jesse, no, I'm answering your question, I promise. My opinion is, I would leave it open-ended only because there's going to be different kinds of events on Sundays. Like, what if they put a Sunday concert, like, let's just say Taylor Swift or Country Fest? What would you rather have?
Well, not likely, because that's not going to happen. So I think, I think what the board needs to consider here, though, with all due respect to your business and what you're saying, is the fact that the board has to act in the public's good and protect the public as well.
I agree.
So the issue here is, if you have a specific request and you're going to be serving food and, you know, this is really what is referred to as the brunch law, so it's not really designed for just opening up earlier for the sake of opening up earlier.
Correct.
So I think, I guess what the board is trying to find out from you is, if you have, your request, by the way, is only for one day right now, it's for one.
Yeah.
So I think you would have to come back for a different request because you've only made that request in this particular instance. So that's, just so you know that, that's where the board is trying to go.
If, I wasn't sure what you were trying to, guys are trying to do, but like, that makes perfect sense with me, but at the same time, would you rather have these people monitored professionally?
We get, we get, but with you coming a little bit later and not hearing the few other restaurants that were here, a lot of the other establishments have an established brunch where now they're looking to stop that brunch earlier. Just before you got here, the question was raised, do you do brunch?
No, I don't. I will be serving food, but it won't be a brunch food.
And it's not an every Sunday brunch?
Absolutely not. I have no interest in opening before noon any other Sunday on the rest of the year. None, zero.
I think that's what the question was, we were trying to get.
Unless there's something going on, there's no reason to.
Well, I just have a concern that if we grant this now for this one time, we're actually setting a precedent with you. And the way, when this brunch law was presented before the town, it was presented in a way that it would be a, similar to Mother's Day, Father's Day, kind of like, kind of sophisticated food serving a little early. Not like we're going to open up the bar because people are drinking outside anyway.
I mean, that's what I'm asking for.
Well, that's.
That's not going to happen with me, I wouldn't ever ask for that, I don't serve brunch.
In looking at this as accepting the brunch bill, as brunch, I think what you're proposing and what you're stating is a little different than what these other establishments are coming before us, saying that they were going to do.
That makes sense. I mean, I'm a little different than them.
Well, in that case, I would not be in favor of granting this to your establishment because I don't think that it is a real brunch in the general sense of sophisticated brunch, Sunday brunch.
I think one thing to consider, though, in due respect to Ginny, is the fact that, I think where you have special events for, that happen throughout the year, that's different, and I think that's something worth considering. But in general, general speaking, the purpose, you're correct in what you stated. I think what I'm suggesting, though, is that this is a unique venue where you have an event that's going to start at 1:00, and a lot of people are going to be there at 10:00. So what the businesses are all trying to do is capture that business before they go into the stadium. Or, as the gentleman's pointing out to you, is that they're going to be there consuming alcohol anyways, but in a different environment as opposed to a controlled one. So the question, then, I think is worth considering, this is entirely up to you, though, is that if there is a special event, if a game, for instance, a game day type of event, that might be something that's worth a specific date as opposed to just generally speaking, opening up throughout the year for Sunday for the sake of opening up at 10:00.
But his request is specific.
That's right, and his request is specific.
And December 31st only. Any questions?
No, not right here.
Now, what we're going to do, too, you missed it, we're going to have everybody speak, and then we're going to vote on all of them after.
Fair enough. Again, my business is very specific, so.
And just one other quick question, how long have you been at Toby Keith's?
Since before they opened.
And your title there is?
I'm the general manager.
Thank you.
Bass Pro Shops, Doing Business As Bluefin Lounge?
Good evening. Evening. Well, my situation is a little bit different. I think for 10:00, because we have some events sometimes, that we can start selling alcohol at 10:00. And the game day, too, people come in around 10:00. We do open at 10:00 every game day, 1:00 games. So if I can serve alcohol at 10:00, that would be beneficial for all of us. I'm not sure everybody else will follow, but that's my situation with 10:00, I mean, 1:00 games, we need to open at 10:00 because all the fans comes in around that time. And we do open at 10:00 at the restaurant. So if I can serve alcohol, that would be a good idea. And sometimes we do have events. Let's say like the Wolf Fork event that we had before, we wanted to serve alcohol before 11:00, 12:00, but we didn't have the permission to do that. They wanted to drink earlier than 11:00, 12:00. So I do have certain events that happen in the morning, so the 10:00 license would be a big deal for me.
So you don't have a regular brunch?
No. I do open at 11:00 every Sunday, but anytime we have game day for 1:00 games, we do open at 10:00 because people are lining up at the door to get in. And we don't serve alcohol because everyone's like, oh, can we serve? Well, I'm like, no, until 11:00. But that one hour is a big deal for them, I guess, because they tend to go back, shop a little more, and come back for 11:00. And some just stay until 11:00 and they get alcohol. So that one hour is a big up. I mean, I can capture a lot of sales at that time because I get filled up right away at 10:00.
So is your, trying to get to what your specific request is? Is it just for home games, 1:00 starts?
Yes.
On Sundays, is there a football season?
Yes. And some events. I mean, people book a lot of events at the Bass Pro Shops once in a while. So I'm not sure where that's possible.
Well, you do not have any specified events. Say we granted, hypothetically, we granted you a 10:00 opening on Sunday home Patriot games that start at 1:00. We made that a condition of your license. We would still require you to come back and request a 10:00 opening if you had a special event. We're not just going to, I don't think anybody here has any appetite for just granting 10:00 openings for any establishment in town that serves alcohol. That's not what the intent of this one is.
Because actually, when I read the letter, I thought it was for every Sunday from now on that is already approved, to be able to sell alcohol at 10:00. That's what I thought the letter intended.
You could probably gather that from reading that, but the reality is that it's, conceivably, it could be, if in fact you had a fixed brunch schedule for every single Sunday.
No, I don't have that.
If you don't have that, then it's a different consideration.
Okay, so for my case, it's only for, like you said, the events? Then I'll have to come back here or have to?
But because you don't have, we're not just going to grant you a blanket for, just in case you have an event?
Okay.
We know the Patriots have Sunday home games that start at 1:00. We don't know when it is, but we know there will be certain events that'll start at 1:00. The others, we don't know, we don't know what you're doing. So we would ask you to come back if you wanted to serve on a Sunday at 10:00, what that event was. So we would ask you to come back if you wanted to serve on a Sunday at ten o'clock, what that event was.
Oh, okay.
We'd want you to come back.
Okay.
I think that's, that's how we have to handle.
And that's actually right.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the board, so are we basically saying that they have to have a brunch in order to do this?
No, not, not necessarily. You, you have the right to, if they spec, have specific dates in mind of, of events that they're holding there, or for instance, if it's an early game day, one o'clock game day, where everybody's there anyways, um, then that's different. But, and this is a unique venue, obviously, throughout the state, so, uh, so requires that consideration. But if you have, but if somebody has a, can produce a menu that says we have a menu, we have a brunch schedule that happens every single Sunday, that's also worthy, worthy of your consideration. To say, we can, we can, we'll give it to you as long as you maintain having this brunch. That was the whole intent of that, but obviously, you can also, you also have the ability to consider it for, for, for events beyond that, that are specific for that particular Sunday, very Sunday.
But in that case, would they have to? I, I look at this brunch bill as truly having a, a Sunday brunch program.
I, I understand.
I think that, and I think if you had, if you had an established Sunday brunch program, I think that is something that townspeople would accept. I mean, we accepted it at town meeting with the, but the, the town is, the, the Board of Selectmen grant the licenses. But I, I think when, when this was presented before town meeting, it was presented as the Sunday brunch bill. And when you hear that, you say, okay, Sunday brunch, every Sunday, Sunday brunch. And I think that, to me, is acceptable.
Well, I would think that one of the things to, to get you to that point of consideration, though, for the special events on, particularly for Sundays, for, for game days. And again, the consideration here is that this is unique, uh, through any, any venue in the entire state. But the, the thing is, is that they, they should be serving food if they're doing that. So, um, that's the consideration, I think you wouldn't wanna just have a, a bar to open an extra hour for the sake of serving alcohol.
Exactly.
So if they're going to be serving alcohol, they must serve food at the same time.
And, and not just nachos on a plate, they want like a buffet or something.
A menu, a menu that's available for food, yeah.
Right, I mean, that, to me, is what the town meeting approved.
Scorpion Bar?
Six thirty-five, so.
In, in their letter, there, there was no mention of food with their request.
Okay.
CBS Scene?
Just for the board's verification, we did contact all these particular individual ownerships to make sure that there was somebody would be here for tonight, so. If there was any questions with that.
Good evening. Um, in conjunction with a lot, a lot of them said, um, we would request ten o'clock service on every Sunday. Um, as you guys might not know, we do about twenty to twenty-five percent of our revenue from private events, from functions, uh, the majority of which are held on weekends. Having those on weekends, um, obviously, I would say we do about ninety percent of our Sundays with private events, which guests usually relocate through the afternoon or evening due to liquor service. Uh, this would be a very good boost for our sales, um, also for our guest, to be able to provide a better environment for them.
What are some of those events?
We do a lot of, uh, baby showers, um, birthday parties, um, wedding rehearsals, um, usually wedding rehearsals are at night, obviously. Um, we do a lot of corporate events, um, so we do a lot of stadium partners, we do a lot of, uh, corporate events throughout the, uh, the tri-chamber area.
Would you be doing the brunch type of?
Correct, yeah, all of our service would be with food, uh, so we do private events packaged with buffets or plated meals, um, in conjunction with alcohol service.
And then what about your, your walk-up business?
Uh, walk-up business, we usually don't open the restaurant until about eleven o'clock on Sundays. Um, this would be mainly specifically for those private events, um, which, like I said, happen about probably ninety percent of Sundays throughout the year. So it's a majority of the Sundays throughout the year that we book private events.
So you wouldn't, someone comes in, so they can't even get in the restaurant at, at ten o'clock?
Correct, uh, only for private events, yeah. So, and currently, we only serve alcohol after, you know, twelve o'clock, um, for Sundays, which then leaves a lot of the private events to book, uh, later times, which they would prefer those morning slots. So the ten o'clock service would be pretty beneficial towards our guest.
So your, your request would be specifically for private events on Sundays?
Correct. And obviously for, you know, stadium events as well. But it's, like I said, it would be the majority of Sundays throughout the year.
So private events and Patriot home games that start at one?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Thank you for consideration.
NPS LLC. Doing business as Gillette Stadium.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Um, I think I echo, um, the thoughts of, let's say, the vast majority of this group out here. Uh, first on, uh, Patriot one o'clock home games, um, our Putnam Club, uh, our Optum Lounge, uh, they open at ten o'clock in the morning. Um, so we'd like to be able to, uh, serve our guests alcohol, that is, uh, we do have food service for each of those. Um, and then our tailgate party, uh, in the Empowered Fieldhouse, along with uh, the Cross Pavilion open at ten thirty, and again, we'd like to be able to serve, and both of those are full brunches. Um, we'd like to serve alcohol in there starting at ten thirty. Um, on all the other days of the year, um, you know, whether it's Ron Young or CBS Scene, uh, we do lose a lot of, uh, morning business on Sundays. Um, we do do a lot of, uh, we do do a lot of weddings, we do a lot of, um, bar mitzvahs, we do a lot of baby showers, we do a lot of those things, but um, we've seen ourselves lose business by not being able to serve, um, before noon on Sundays. Um, and we've seen that business go elsewhere, uh, so we'd like to have the ability to do it on all Sundays. Um, but for us, you know, we don't operate as a bar or restaurant, so on, when we don't have a football game on Sunday, it would be for a specific event, uh, that books with the stadium that has a plated meal or has a buffet along with it. Uh, whether it's a brunch, you know, in the clinical definition, or if someone wants to order, you know, a barbecue spread, uh, as long as we're serving it with food, we'd feel we'd be compliant with the regulation. So I thank you very much for your time.
Any questions?
Oh, just a clarification. You won't be selling beer in the, in the stands?
No.
This is strictly for the, the clubs?
Yeah, so just to clarify, in the, in the stadium, the general stadium seats do not open until eleven o'clock. Um, so this has no impact on that group of people. Uh, and then on any other Sunday where we don't have an event, we don't open to the public.
Any questions? Thank you.
I might be next up on the Charitable Foundation, which I think I already covered, but the New England Patriot Charitable Foundation liquor license covers service solely on, um, game day events in the Empowered Fieldhouse. Uh, so those events open, uh, for one o'clock games at ten thirty. Uh, currently, we don't start service of alcohol till eleven, we'd like to have the ability to start serving at ten thirty for that location.
Does that occur only on game days, Jim?
Yeah, the licenses that have been requested historically. Uh, there've been other times where we've requested specific one-day licenses for other things, but for this purpose, it's strictly for NFL game days at one o'clock. Thank you.
Scorpion Bar never, never came in, right?
Don't see them.
Once, and twice.
Have to, have to reapply.
Any questions from the board as a, you know, for, for the group?
Uh, don't have, um, questions, I guess, more of, you know, categorizing, I think what we just heard over the last forty-five minutes seems like there's, um, sort of three categories we have to think about, you know, the true brunch category. Lafayette, Bata Louis, Davios, Skip Jacks, where they've all got established brunches. I think we've got the category, um, we just mentioned, of Patriots, um, where it's just, um, more catering and, and functions in game days. And then the couple that's strictly just game days. Just to review.
Any questions? I mean, this is a public hearing, anybody out in the audience that has any questions or concerns? Seeing none, making a motion to.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Should we take these up one by one?
I, I think we have to, since there's a, there's a couple of them that are, um.
Yeah, because I think they, they do have different circumstances, so.
Well, I was, I was gonna categorize it based on the way Mark kind of described them, the, the true brunch, but I, we can do, we can do it one by one.
I'll be easy to do it that way.
Can I have a motion on Lafayette House?
Could I, could I just, uh, have a question? Can we specify that for approval of these, um, brunch, um, openings, ten o'clock, that the establishment actually has a true brunch program? I mean, can that be one of the stipulations?
How do you, how do you define brunch, though?
Have a brunch menu printed up, uh, have, every Sunday, ten o'clock, you have brunch, you advertise brunch. You know, it's always, I could, I could go to any one of those establishments at ten o'clock on a Sunday morning and sit down and order brunch.
So with, like, say CBS Scene, for instance, where they're not looking for that, but they have a, a menu that, you know, for an event, you could come in and you could do brunch at ten AM, or you know, like Jim said, you could do barbecue, I mean, so CBS Scene isn't looking to have an established, all of us go in at ten o'clock for brunch, but they want it for their events, so.
Do we have the latitude to condition that for private events only?
You can condition any license you choose, you have that latitude as the licensing authority. So, uh, the question is, what is the, um, what's a reasonable consideration, uh, under the, under the requirements? And so I think having food, defining brunches, it can, can be difficult sometimes because people can, can define it different ways. But having requirement, at least to have food, um, to serve with, with the alcohol at all times, is, is certainly within your, within the, within the realm of reason.
Yeah, and legally, I mean, just 'cause everybody's always called it the brunch law, I mean, if, if you go to a court and food is, you know, the legal definition, I mean.
I mean, technically, right now, I mean, not, not to sound funny about this, but, but they, they now have things called brunch burgers, with that, which have an egg on them, you know, and so it, so it gets defined different ways. I mean, a place that serves burgers could serve a brunch burger, but, um, and, and then, you know, and they, but they serve that throughout the entire day. You know, so I understand what, I think what you're trying to say, Ginny, but I think, again, I go back to the point that I tried to make earlier, was that you have a unique venue, which is different from any place in the entire Commonwealth. You have the ability to, to do, to allow service which is already being served, more than likely, in an uncontrolled environment. So they, this is what, what, and, and opportunity to collect on that in a venue which is, which is something that we know people will come to. And will patronize those businesses.
Yeah, but when you're talking about the French fifty-two Sundays out of the year, that's, that's different, that's, that's not just people drinking on the parking lot.
Understood, no, understood.
On a couple of Sundays, Sundays a year. So, I mean, when I, when I looked at the Warren article as brunch, I, I looked at it as a true brunch. A sophisticated Sunday, very pleasant eating experience at a very fine venue.
I, I'm not, I'm not trying.
I think that was the expectation of the town meeting.
Understood, so I guess my, my point to you is, oh, different people define brunch differently. And so I think you, you get into that, it, it's a very fine line in terms of what that actually means. As long as they're serving food, I think you, you're okay with that because some people then may view that as being their brunch.
Well, why can't we define the brunch?
But Ginny, there's, there's also one other thing you have to think about, and that's that little carve-out that a few of the restaurants want, where they wanna do a catering type of brunch.
Right, no, 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 I, I understand, I, I understand that, no, that, that in itself would be, you know, sophisticated catering, you know, I, I understand that, there are a couple of establishments that have that, that predicament, uh, situation. But I just, I just don't think people at town meetings said, okay, let everybody open, you know, ten o'clock, we can start boozing it up. That, that was not the intention of, I know the advisory committee did not think that. They were very concerned about that.
Well, I, I also, I also think, though, that they, um, but it's still within the realm of the board to decide how you want to control that. And, and the way to control that is to say, okay, if you're going to do that, you have to serve food with it. Because there are places that will just open for the sake of selling alcohol, that's not the intent. The sake, the, the purpose of it is to, is to, is to open earlier, to allow businesses to come, come on, come in earlier, and to allow the, the, the public to patronize those businesses that they wouldn't otherwise go to because they're not serving alcohol.
And why you see that?
So is this discussion in the concerns that you're having, it's obviously for tonight, but for future people that come in, but going through this list that are here, and the presentations that we've had, it seems like they've all, with the exception of maybe one or two, have the food part of that. So is it the food, is it any of these? The, the food not to the standards of the brunch, or are you looking for a pass today to other, this is a discuss, a bigger discussion?
No, no, I, I think if we're gonna, if, if people are gonna have, apply to us for, to be able to serve lunch at ten, then they should have a regular lunch unless it's, you know, certain venues that only have, you know, functions. I think I'd just like to put a definition of, of a brunch menu, it's not just a plate of nachos and some wieners. You know, that, to me, is not, is not brunch. You know, that's, I'd just like to have a little bit of clarity and maybe we can have a little more control of, you know?
I don't think anybody disagrees.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just wondering on the same page.
I feel like I'm the only one.
But, but I think, too, if you look at, and some of these have, you know, specific with food service, they're all restaurants.
Right.
So they're gonna be open, they're gonna be offering, if you're gonna bring people in, you might as well offer your full menu, so we've already, their menus already existing, so it's not like there's anything.
Yeah, and that's, that is the expectation that we should have, that when these establishments come before us, that they're actually gonna have, you know, like, food set up and buffet or plated, you know, that, that's.
I mean, I think we just use the stipulation that you have to offer at a minimum your full lunch menu, you know?
Are you gentlemen from the Scorpion Bar?
Yes.
Okay.
How does that work?
You have to reopen the public hearing.
We'll have them come back.
I make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
We have to read the public hearing again?
No, the public hearing notice has already been read into the record, so you're all set with that, so.
So, you guys are late.
All of us until seven PM.
I don't know how that happens.
No mention of time.
But, anyway, we've gone through all the establishments, they've made their case for a, a ten o'clock opening. We just reopen the public hearing to accommodate your establishment. I'd like you to just step up to the microphone, state your name, and one of the reasons why, or some of the reasons why you think a ten o'clock Sunday opening would be beneficial.
Hello, my name is Jason Nichols, I'm the Director of Operations for Big Night Entertainment Group. Ten AM opening would be beneficial for us, one, we have a bunch of staff coming in very early, obviously, for traffic reasons. Excuse me. Where we just sit around, we turn away a lot of guests trying to come into the venue. Excuse me. We would like to accommodate those guests, have them come in early so that we could continue serving all of them for lunches and dinners and, and all those things. I'm sorry, I need a drink of water.
There's a bubbler out there, I'm sorry. Right by the bathroom, sir.
Again, to accommodate the guests that we have turned away, we turn quite a few away early as people are coming in. We would still use the same security parameters with security on the door, with the check-in ID stamping and, and everything else for safety reasons and making sure we're serving responsibly.
Do you guys have a, a specific brunch program or brunch menu specifically for Sundays?
We do not, we run the full menu, we, we did originally, start with a smaller menu to accommodate the restaurant, but since the kitchen is now up to speed, we're fine.
So it would be full menu available?
Yes.
Starting Sundays, ten AM?
Ten AM.
You looking for every Sunday or just game day Sundays?
Just game days, just home game days.
One o'clock starts.
Yes.
In, in your letter, it said allowing service of alcohol beverages beginning at ten, you want to take advantage of the new Sunday, ten AM opening. But were you going to, is your idea if people want to come in, have a drink, sit at the bar? You know, so they can't come in now until eleven or twelve o'clock, so now, ten o'clock, they can come in, sit at the bar and?
Food service and bar service, yes ma'am.
Okay, but, but you have a, so you don't, you said you don't have a specific brunch program?
Not a specific brunch menu where we would say it's a brunch, we would open up the full menu starting at ten AM.
What if someone came in and said, oh, we just want to sit at the bar and have a couple of drinks?
Then yes, ma'am, we would accommodate.
That's, I think that's not exactly, I think that's not exactly what the French bill.
The, the intent was not to give everybody a head start to, to sit at the bar. The intent was to grant a ten AM liquor license to those establishments that have a regularly scheduled brunch or private events where food will be part of it, not just saddling up to the bar and-
If that's the case, then absolutely, we would do that, if, if it's that's the parameters, forgive me for not knowing that. If that, then they cannot just drink, they would have to purchase food or dine. Is it no liquor sales at all from ten to eleven, just that it has to be a food component? So by all means, if that was the parameter, then we would follow it, yes.
But how, how would you, how would you control that? Somebody says, oh, I want a, I want a Bloody Mary, I want a Bloody Mary while I'm looking at the menu. They decide they don't want to eat. How do you, how do you, how do you, how do you, how do you control that?
We could put a, a policy in place with the servers that they would have to first get a food item to the table before they would bring the drinks, if that was the case. Very easily controlled with servers and things, we can put whatever they order, appetizers, entrees, and make sure that no liquor hits that table until food has been served.
You know, just started to bring up some new questions.
Yeah, and questions that, I mean, if you look at like, I'm just gonna use Bar Louie, for example, we didn't stipulate with them that it can't be bar only. And I'm not, I, I agree that it does have to be a food component, but we just have to be consistent with this.
Drink has to be accompanied by a food, by a food item.
Yeah, but it can't be just-
Understood, yeah, or something off the menu, a food, not, not just an appetizer, but a, but a, but a meal, a food item.
The last time, go back twenty plus years ago, what would require, and what we did was, you know, order food and drink. The customer who was charged, he, he did a bag, it was fourteen dollars, they got charged fourteen dollars, which is a big life. So they were necessaries paying for that food right upfront, there was no confusion of, oh, I didn't want to order that, they had to pay upfront. And that way, the board had basically a checking balance if this person, because you would eat your food and be done. And police officer walks in, hey, that guy's not eating, right here in the slip, and so they're charged for it. And that was the way they had a checking balance if the police officer came in, the customer had slipped on the front. He called the D and made a bag.
But, but the big thing is you had an actual brunch program?
Yeah, 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 it was a small-
It was advertised, did you advertise it, and it was-
It actually-
Beginning time and stuff like that?
At that point, we actually charged them for it, we handed them a plate. There were no, and there's your plate, they'll help yourself, but they could not get up to your, you wasn't there or anyone thrown up, so they were charged for that food.
So one way of addressing that is to say, you know, the way it really is supposed to, I think the genuine intent here is to, it's food accompanied by a beverage, not beverage accompanied by food. So the way to deal with that is, is that they have to order food first before they can order a beverage.
So one of my concerns is that we, we grant a license. Can we condition a license and, and make them come back with a, an advertisement and a, and a menu schedule? Because I mean, he, I'm not, I'm not singling you out, I'm not, I don't want to point you, but anybody can come up here and say, yeah, I'll do that. And then they walk away, they have the license, and, you know, it's, it's incumbent upon us to go, to go check them. You know, Lieutenant Noonan, you know, we gotta do, we gotta do a, a morning check or whatever, you know? You know, with, with the establishments that already have the brunch program, I mean, Bar Louie's, they have it, you know, across the country, it just hasn't been here because of the, the timing issue, that'll, that'll get rolled out, but some of these other establishments that are really buyers first, grill second, I mean, you might argue that, that you're, you're a grill first, a restaurant first, and a buyer second. But how do we, how do we, how do we, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? You know, do we give them the license and hope that they'll, they'll come back with a, with a menu program or a, a food program to satisfy that requirement?
You can condition it, that, that say that they have to come back within three months. And within three months, that, that, that shows that they have established a program for, for use of the, for our food service, that, that includes, a brunch service that includes, who's alcohol?
I think, I think that's what one of your concerns is, that, you know, how, how do we know that they're gonna-
Exactly. I mean, if, if Lafayette House or Bar Louie has a, has an advertisement, it's, come join us for Sunday brunch, every Sunday, ten o'clock, blah, blah, blah. Then the expectation is you're actually-
And we have, and we have full, full-service bar in addition to that.
Right, and it's not just the town of Foxborough is opening up, opening up the bars at ten o'clock on Sunday mornings.
Understood, that's, the message here is, has to be clear.
So, one, one second. So would your intent to do that, to have an advertised-
Absolutely.
Full menu starting at ten o'clock at Sundays, you can call it brunch, you can call it whatever you want.
Absolutely.
You know, there would be a stipulation that alcohol only be served with food?
Absolutely, without a doubt, we have brunch menus at other places, it's very simple for us to devise, so that would not be an issue at all. And we could absolutely, on any marketing or anything we use, stipulate that it has to be a food purchase, absolutely.
But your, your request is just for game day Sundays?
Correct.
Just game day Sundays, so it's not, it's just not a blanket license for every Sunday throughout the course of the year, it's just game day Sundays, one o'clock, home games?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have a question?
Yeah, so, since we're talking, there's several people here that are just asking for event game day Sunday licenses, correct? I believe I already stated that there's lots open at nine AM, correct? There's people in the parking lot drinking at nine AM, guaranteed whether we like it or not, I know this is something I deal with every day because I turn a lot of people away.
It's gonna come up to the microphone at some point.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna have to come up to the microphone.
So, when it comes to just talking about game day Sundays or events or catering or whatever it may be, I don't, let, let me put you my perspective on this. So if I, if my guests walk in to my restaurant at ten AM, and I say, I'm sorry, I can't give you a beer unless you order a food item, they'll get a food item. They may not even eat it, doesn't make any difference, it's game day. They were already in the parking lot drinking, it may be two degrees outside, they're cold, and they want to sit inside and drink. At the end of the day, I don't see any version of this where the town loses, because, again, you're having this monitored by professional staff compared to them shotgunning beers in the parking lot, which is, again, I'm a different business than most people, but that's what I'm dealing with every day. I don't see any version of this where you lose when it comes to an event license that you're already asking me to do for eleven AM. The only difference is you're collecting another hour's worth of revenue, which for some of us is quite a bit of money, and it's being monitored by professional staff. So having a blanket license, again, I agree with you, doesn't make any sense. But when it comes to applying for an extension license on specific Sundays, whether it's for catering, whether it's for event days, whatever, if you have a good reason behind it and you apply to this luckman for it, and they can prove that, I, I think the system should be exactly the same as it is, except it moves back an hour. Because I don't see any version of this where anyone loses, you're being monitored by professional staff, you, us as a business are making more money, and you as a town are collecting on that as well. That's my opinion, and that's where I'm getting confused with what you're asking, because I can guarantee you, there's many customers that will come into my business, order a food item just so they can get a drink at ten AM.
I think you're confusing what this bill is for.
Maybe I am.
This bill is not designed to be able to monitor drunks more efficiently. This bill, this, what we're, what we're, the extension to ten o'clock is so that we could, they, these restaurants can offer something competitively, a nice, a nice situation, and have, I mean, have a nice Sunday, Sunday brunch.
I agree with that.
But, but I think-
But I don't agree with the fact that-
But I think you're, you're, you're looking at a ten o'clock opening.
Yeah.
Okay. These other people are looking at a ten o'clock opening, the town of Foxborough's looking at, for a ten o'clock opening, far more sophisticated dining experience.
And I'm agreeing-
Similar to what's in, what's in Providence, similar to what's in Boston. And I think, I think the town of Foxborough would, is not interested in opening up a bar at ten o'clock earlier just to keep people warm as they, as they-
I believe it's him, me, and two other people that I've listened to since I've been here, and I know I showed up late, so I apologize for that, have said, we're not looking for that either, we're looking for that when it comes to specific events, or in some people's cases, catering things. That's all we're asking for, but to put a blanket on it that you have to order a food item is gonna turn a lot of business away from me and push them right back into the parking lot. That is what I'm saying. Do you understand what I mean?
I don't think you understand.
Talking apples and oranges.
I mean, have to explain it more.
No, we get it, we get it. All right, so you're gonna go to, to a brunch menu for your, for your Sunday game days?
Yes, sir.
And that'll be advertised as such?
Yes, sir.
That's what you're telling us?
Can I just, when we had, when we granted, and I can remember when we granted the, how about the moon and splits the license? We asked to see their menu. So I, I think maybe one of the requirements, if we grant these licenses, that like a brunch menu be provided so that we can actually see what, what it, what it is.
Yeah, that's, that was my point earlier.
Then start suggesting that you can take them back, we'll provide them to you.
Okay, any other questions for the Scorpion Bar? Okay, thank you. Before we reclose the public hearing, anybody in the audience have any new comments?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve Lafayette House seventeen eighty-four?
Move to approve, well, should I, how should I, yeah, state that, they'll move to approve the extended?
Extension of, of the, of the all alcohol serving license to ten AM on Sundays for the Lafayette House with whatever blank conditions that you want to apply.
Well, we'll start generically, move to approve the all alcohol liquor license to ten AM on Sundays for the Lafayette House seventeen eighty-four.
Second.
Second emotion, sorry, motion made, seconded twice, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Move to approve an all alcohol service license to ten AM on Sundays for Bar Louie.
Should we be putting in this accompanied by food or any of them going forward?
Yeah, the actual advertisement says it in some cases, but not all, or the, the agenda says, so I think you, you should be specific in stating that if that's your intent, to make sure that they serve, serve food.
Yeah, I mean, they have to-
We're, we're gonna ask for a brunch menu.
Well, I mean, it has to be-
Well, either brunch or, or full menu.
Full, or full menu. Full menu.
A lot of the places that are doing events, they don't call them brunches, so. Square peg, ground hole.
Well, the thing is, with, to find brunch, I mean, if I went to a brunch and they had prime rib, I'm gonna have that instead of eggs, so does that still brunch if you eat in prime rib?
You have, you have the choice, lunch, lunch or breakfast, that's what I call a brunch.
Just because it's before noon, it has to, you know, so I think we just have to clearly say, you know, accompanied by food, we have to be consistent.
Yeah, just got myself out of a-
This was supposed to be a quick meeting on our week off. What happened?
So much for that idea, right?
Wasn't the original, um, public notice alcohol included?
Food included? Yeah, but when we're reading and voting, we need to make sure we're including-
It's conditioned in the license. It's in condition in the license.
A, a full menu.
Yes.
Full food service. Move to retract Lafayette House. Start again.
Okay. I'm actually, I'm actually okay with Lafayette House. They're an established business, they've been running brunches, that's what they do. And, and he's been here for years, so.
I think, to Jim's point, I think, I think the ones that already have the established brunch, it's, it's okay. It's the other ones that, you know, are doing private events or, uh, Sunday game days, we, we have to add that stipulation. So I think, I think, no, that one's okay.
Win one for Ron.
So you're, you're on item number six ten Bar Louie. Louie, Bar Louie does not indicate that they're serving food, so that would should be a condition of the license.
So, um, move to approve an all alcohol service license to ten AM on Sundays with a full menu to Bar Louie.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, um, under discussion, I would like to add, um, because they don't have a, an advertised full menu, they can produce that within, within ninety days, so condition the license, and within ninety days, just send us or, or, I don't know how you wanna handle it, but then you have to prove that they're-
They, they need to produce such a record to, to the board or to, to our office before that period of time. Within that period, ninety day period of time.
And, three months, but that's twelve times that they'd be running. Why, why does it have to be?
Could be thirty days.
Thirty days should be.
Why couldn't they just walk in tomorrow with their established menu and hand that to us?
Some of them, some may not have that ability to do that that quickly.
No, no, like-
Some of the, the corporate ones might have a-
No, I know, but I mean, if, if a restaurant is not gonna, they're just gonna offer their full menu, I mean, that, you can call that brunch, you know?
I think the, the different, the confusion is that some are, some don't offer brunch, other, they all offer full menus.
Right.
But they, the question is, do, do some offer brunch specifically, and, and some may not be able to quickly turn that, that quickly around, but everybody should be able to produce a menu.
But again, like I-
May, maybe, maybe to change that, um, if we grant Bar Louie, uh, per the, per the motion, accompanied by full menu.
Yeah.
Does that-
Yeah, 'cause I mean, if food is food, whether it's the full existing menu, or if you add an egg to it and call it brunch, or take their regular menu and call it a brunch menu, it's still, as long as it's accompanied by food, I think we're-
And don't forget, we're, this is an hour, so no one's gonna have a brunch menu and then change to a lunch menu.
No, I know, so I'm just saying, you know, uh, full menu.
Yeah, I think it needs to be full menu, and if, you know, like Ron's place, if, if they wanna do a, a brunch all the time, you know, maybe everybody else will say, "Hey, Ron's killing it with the brunch, let's switch to a brunch menu."
Probably the idea to have the, the menu on, on file anyways in the office, just so in case anybody ever, ever questions it, it's there.
Okay, did I screw that all up?
So he, with food, accompanied by food, and it was seconded, and then you tried to screw it up.
I just wanna keep Jimmy longer.
I, I don't mind. I just didn't expect.
No.
It, it gets complicated when you're talking about ten different types of establishments under one umbrella.
Okay.
Not to belaboring it, but the, the fact that someone goes into the bar and sits and have a drink versus sitting and have a, is there a condition that goes with this, that they have to have food?
Yeah, yeah. The full, the full menu has to be, has to be available. I mean, I think what you, what you're saying is, they wanna order something at ten o'clock, they have to have a-
The full menu might be there, but someone goes to the bar and says, "No, I just wanna a drink." How do you, without over regulating it? But, but the fact is, we have bars at Patriots Place, it's gonna be packed at ten o'clock, and people are gonna go in and just have a drink, and, and ignore the menu, and that, that's what we've been talking about. And that's, you know, an extension from eleven to ten, but under the bylaw where it is brunch, I think we have to put that in there.
In that case, I think that the staff should be advised that people must order food first before they can order a drink. That's all.
So do you have to, we have to amend the, the motion?
I think it's, it's, it's part of the, it's part of the discussion here. I think you, you should, what you, your, your intention here is to make sure that everybody have, serves food with the alcohol. So the intention is that, um, alcohol cannot be served unless food is part of the, part of the, uh, the serving that day. So that should be part of everybody's motion, period.
So it should be accompanied by food service?
Yes.
But I think it has to be stronger than that. No alcohol can be purchased without a food purchase.
Yeah.
Why can't it be, um, the food service must be either like a buffet or plated?
Well, I don't think-
Well, what other options are there besides plated or buffet? I mean-
Well, when you think of plated, it's like a real vegetable, you know, two vegetables and a piece of meat or something like that, where food could be like-
Well, a hamburger, a hamburger's on a plate with french fries is, that's plated, so.
But rather than nachos on a paper plate. Do you know what I'm saying? Because the people wouldn't know nachos on a paper plate at seven o'clock on Sunday morning.
All right, how do we get, how do we get past this?
Uh, no alcohol can be ordered without a food purchase. That's on the-
We have a question from, mm-hmm?
Uh, I'm just asking about, uh, in dogmages right now. I have guests that sit at eleven and wait until twelve oh one to bring their alcohol and that's the inconvenience. I, I'm just curious on how to, in the real world example, I know it's not a safe, uh, environment, what it is, but people say now, getting ready to order fifty dollars, so why do you want to wait till ten o'clock? Cause they do. Um, is that, oh no, you can't unwind yet, and you totally do. And to quit that, I'm gonna be a bird before I go get your boarding area. You know, it's just, again, it's just, it's not the guests, it's just about the convenience in them, one way or the other. Whether they have to wait ten minutes or minutes, or now they have to sit there with water, perfecting plane minutes while they decide on what they're gonna do for their brunch, or they're sophisticated, as you said, brunch, where they're sitting there, and that's where they tailgate. So, I know we are all talking about different things, but I think, um, I don't, I don't know many restaurants in the area, but I know Skip Jacks is probably thinking the same thing. No, come in, let's order your food, and then we'll talk about drinks later. The point was to get the ten o'clock license, so there isn't that rush, or there isn't that blanket on the time constraint.
Well, I, I, I think the way, the way we're looking at is, you already have a brunch menu established, and it's been long established, just like Lafayette House, just like, like Skip Jacks. That's not our concern, okay? Our concern is the establishment that, that does not have a, uh, a regular brunch menu, or a full menu available at, at ten o'clock, okay? And they're just gonna do that just to accommodate the, the ten o'clock. I, I see you shaking your head, I-
I don't understand any of this.
It's, it's really bothersome to me, seeing you back there shaking your head.
I don't understand. At the end of the day, when it comes to an event-
If you're gonna speak, either come to the microphone, or don't interrupt someone that's speaking.
There are people in the parking lot, every single game day. I have a line out my door that stretches around my building, and they have a very large building. Those people have been in the parking lot shotgunning beers, they are extraordinarily hard to monitor, I have to vet them, them nonstop. My security guards do a great job of that, it's really hard for them. But at the end of the day, these people have been drinking since they came into the parking lot. Now, they've already paid for parking, they've already been to their car, they've already had three beers at their car, and are now trying to get into my restaurant to have something to eat, and to have more drinks. To do that an hour earlier, I don't see how anyone in this system loses. You, as a town, last time I checked, your job is to take, protect the Commonwealth, and also make money so that you can continue to do what you need to do to protect the Commonwealth. My job as a business is to make money.
So on that note, why, why don't we take it from ten, let's move it to nine or eight in the morning? Would that make more sense to you?
That's not what the state says you can do.
Okay, the state, under this bylaw that we're looking at, and I, I'm not sure if you're understanding, because we're talking apples and oranges. You're here for one day, uh, one Sunday to go from one-
I'm not here for one Sunday, I'm here for every Sunday that has a game or an event on it, or any other Sunday that has an event. My business is never gonna open before noon, because we don't serve that kind of thing. We're not gonna have a brunch menu, ever. We serve burgers, beers, that's what we do.
Then if that's the case, you probably are not gonna get an approval from this board, if you're not gonna abide by what we're thinking, what the town board-
No, and I understand that. But because either way, I couldn't abide by what you're thinking. With, with your stipulations, my business couldn't do that. Cause here's why, and I'm just giving you-
Now we're talking the same thing. That, that's fine. It, it, it's not set up for your business to serve alcohol early.
And I understand that. But that's what I'm here fighting for, which is why I'm shaking my head, and that's, I'm pretty sure what this whole conversation is about, correct?
It's not, it's not.
These are restaurants, these are restaurants that serve alcohol, you're a bar that serves food, there's a big difference.
Yes.
These are well-established businesses that serve-
So that is, so apparently, I, I never should have gotten this notice, and I, I apologize my bad, I'm sorry for wasting your time, gentlemen. Thank you.
Sorry, it had to be said. How many times can you listen to the same thing? It's one less thing that we have to vote on tonight.
Okay, we're back on Bar Louie.
So, Bar Louie is gonna be, um, made the motion, accompanied by food.
With, uh, no alcohol can be served, ordered without food purchase.
Back to Davio's point, can we do it in a way where, I mean, if you walk into Bar Louie, Tavallino's, Davio's, or Toby's, if you walk and sit at the bar, I mean, the ninety percent of the people are there to have a drink, and not to eat. If you walk into Davio's or Bar Louie's and you want a table, you're obviously there to eat. So can we just have the stipulation that the physical bar is not open, but the restaurant is, with alcohol service? Is that a possibility for that one or two hour period? I mean, I'm, I don't own a establishment, I mean, would it affect you guys if?
Yeah, some people will eat at the bar.
Yeah.
I would say that a lot of people will eat at the bar, um, but I would also say a lot of people will wait for whoever it is to find parking and have a drink while they wait, and then go to the table. I'm not trying to give anybody a hard time, I'm just trying to think of
Yeah.
everything that's gonna be affected by it, um, and every server coming up with a bar, gonna come up and go, "What about this?" Well, what about, you know, without trying to make them mad. Um, you know, I, I don't write any of this stuff, I probably would just say with a full menu offered. You know, I mean, again, they come in at eleven, we don't sit there and hold their hand till they order food, you know? We expect that they're gonna do the right thing, um, and order food, but.
And, and I think that's an excellent point, what you just said, you know, it's eleven o'clock, same things happening, and you're not holding their hand, I mean.
I mean, that makes sense, it's the same clientele.
Right, and it's just ten o'clock. Yeah. I mean, I, I, I don't think we have to stipulate-
No, we're probably overthinking the heck out of it.
I think all we have to stipulate is that, that food is perfect, in, in the fact that, or-
Food available.
Available.
Available, yeah.
Yeah. Other than that, yeah, I don't, I don't think we can micromanage much more than that, because of every situation on a Sunday, it's gonna be so different.
More than likely, and I think the, the one exception, I think, may have been the gentleman who just left, is that the, the primary condition, primary purpose is to get people into their establishments to serve food and alcohol. It, they just couldn't, they were probably there anyways for food, for the most part. Um, now, now they have the ability to sell alcohol on top of that at an earlier state, uh, earlier timeframe. So I, that's my sense and my read of, of all the establishments that are here. Is that, that's why they're, that's why they're here, it's, it's an accompaniment to the food that's already being served anyways.
So as, as long as the full menu is available at ten?
Which I think everybody here can attest to that they'll have.
It's online, I know.
Ron's got a question, I think.
Ron? One thing I think-
Sorry?
I, I'm already approved, but I'll just bring this up. I think one thing everyone's forgotten about is public safety. So what happens is, it used to be, you know, the games start at one o'clock, you could get there at ten minutes before one and get in. Now they go through all this security with you, so it takes longer to get in the game. So if you're looking at a one o'clock game, it takes fifteen minutes to get to my seat, a half hour to get through security, there's forty-five minutes, it's basically, I've gotta leave Lafayette House at eleven thirty, or in their case, say, twelve o'clock to get into the game. So that window of serving food, but you don't have enough time. Forget if you're, they, even gonna buy a drink, you don't have enough time. So that is what somewhat has propagated this to come up, is people have to get at the stadium sooner to go through the security checkpoints.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's only on game day, though.
Right, 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 that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we have, we have other establishments that wanna start opening it every, every Sunday.
Yeah, exactly, just like me.
So, so can we get back to Bar Louie, please? Not the more, because I, I think the point's been well made, I think we've all heard it enough times, so, but thank you, Ron, it was, it was a good thought, so. By, so going, getting back to the Bar Louie, the approval was the, the extension, provided that they have food, full food, food service, and they can, they can, they can provide a demonstration of that within thirty days. So that's our reasonable?
I read the motion, or you want me to read it again?
I'll second the motion. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Move to approve an all alcohol service license, uh, at ten AM for Davio's Northern Italian Steakhouse on Sundays with a full menu, with no alcohol, can be ordered without a food purchase.
No.
No.
No, no, full, full, full menu.
Full menu.
Oh, just ended at the full menu. Gotcha.
Full menu available.
Unless you wanna single them out.
Thought I included that.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Uh, move to approve an all alcohol, uh, service license, uh, to ten AM on Sundays to Skip Jack's with a full menu.
Second.
Motion made, seconded any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Finally got it right. Um, next one's Toby Keith, should we move to deny?
We need to vote on it, right?
Yeah.
Move to deny.
I think you make an approval to it, make a motion in the affirmative to approve it.
Yeah, how, how it's written.
Yep, so you have to read it how it's written to approve it, and then we deny it.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying, okay. Uh, so move to, uh, approve all alcohol service license to ten AM on, on, uh, Sundays when the New England Patriots are playing at one AM, uh, one PM on twelve thirty-one.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
So move to approve an all alcohol service license to ten AM on, uh, to ten AM for Bass Pro Shop, doing business as the Blue Flynn Lounge.
Accompanied by a full-
Accompanied by a full menu on game days only for them, correct?
Game days only, sir?
And-
On game days only, and, uh-
In certain special events.
They said they would come back for those certain events.
They're gonna come back for the certain special events.
So I would keep that off, I would not put that on.
So just on game days, one o'clock start.
Second.
Patriots, one o'clock start.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Move to approve an all alcohol service license to ten AM to the Scorpion Bar on, um, with a full menu on game, Patriot game days only, that start at one o'clock.
That, that's what you're looking for, right?
Yep.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? All's in favor?
Move to approve an all alcohol service license to ten AM on Sundays with a full menu to the CBS Scene Restaurant and Bar.
Second.
Just for clarification, for all Sundays?
The other one does a lot of catering.
Does a lot of, and special events on Sundays. Other, other than games, other than games, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Motion made, second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Move to approve an all alcohol service license to ten AM on Sundays with a full menu uh, to NPS LLC, doing business as Gillette Stadium.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
And, uh, move to approve an all alcohol service license to ten AM on Sundays with a full menu...
Ten thirty.
Oh, yeah. The foundation said ten thirty, so was that all?
Yep, ten thirty is my...
Ten thirty, uh, so let me start again, then. Uh, move to approve an all alcohol service license, uh, to the New England Pa, Patriots Charitable Foundation for ten thirty with a full menu on Patriot home games that start at one.
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion?
This is, the, just to be clear, this is a one-day license, right? So just, because they don't, you don't have all, all license, you only have one-day licenses, correct?
Just have one-day license, and when, every time we need another, when we come back to the board with a request to start at ten.
So this gives you the ability to open at ten thirty on, on the one that's already approved that's coming up?
Twelve thirty-one right now, and we'll amend our application.
Fair enough, that, that, that makes it clearer. Thank you, Jim.
Um, question?
Yep.
Because we're, we're approving it, does it have to be a public hearing every time they, they come back to request? Or is it gonna be an action item?
Well, if you, if you notice, it is an action item, number two, uh, for, for the, for the...
Well, for, for a one-day license, I, they probably don't need a public hearing, because they're not extend, the, the reason why you're doing the public hearing is because it is a, um, it's an amendment to the existing license. One-day licenses don't require the two-week no, two-week hearing requirement.
So when you, just keep that in mind when you schedule, you don't have to do the two-week ones.
Motion made, second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
That was painful.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We have, uh...
Stick around for action items if you want.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. Good luck, everyone.
Thank you.
Hope everyone has a happy new year.
Bye, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
How's your nephew doing? Good?
Oh, that's right.
It's a girl. It's a girl.
Congratulations.
That's not hard to do.
All right, Doc.
All right.
Check through these action items.
So, uh, move to approve the twenty eighteen licenses.
Second.
Motion made, second any further discussion? Seeing none?
Under discussion, next year can we do electronic signatures on these, or is it not feasible?
Is that possible, to do that, electronic signatures?
I'll have to check with IT, I think it should be...
We should be able to get that.
Okay, um, yeah, 'cause it was brutal trying to get...
It's really, it's really, really difficult to get, get you to sign all those, I mean, it's really, especially if it's already approved publicly. It's, it's just merely, just some...
Yeah, and in the past, we had keys to the town hall, so I would always come in...
Whenever you felt like it, yeah.
Or weekends, and, I mean, this December is my busiest time of year, and I'm not trying to make an excuse for not doing this job, but it definitely made it a lot harder. When I finally, um, was able to take two hours off from work, I came in and I didn't have to sign any, um, which was a little aggravating. So we just need to come up with a better...
Well, you didn't have to sign, 'cause you didn't have, what it was, two hundred...
As long as there were at least three signatures, you know? So we just need to come up with a better process of either go an electronic signature for the two-hundred-plus applications, or something.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm not, I mean, I was busy, so it's as much as a blame on me as well, but there has to be...
It's not an issue, it is, it is difficult to get, there's a lot, there's a lot of licenses to sign, so we know that, so let's see if we get the electronic signature, it's, it's not unreasonable request.
Yeah.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Move to approve, um, three one-day all alcohol liquor licenses for the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation for the January sixth or seventh playoff game, January thirteenth or fourteenth playoff game, and possible AFC championship game on January twenty-first.
Second.
Motion made, second, um...
They're not gonna need the sixth or seventh, just because they got the bye, but...
Under discussion, did, was the twenty-first called?
Um, yes, 'cause they, they paid for two playoff games, so we thought it would be the sixth or the seventh, or the thirteenth.
But the sixth, the sixth or the seventh, they have to buy, so it would be the thirteenth, fourteenth?
Or the twenty-first.
Or the twenty-first.
Yeah, we can amend that, uh...
Okay.
Yeah, you just, you just need to amend it in your motion.
To what, take out the sixth and seventh?
Yes, and just, and just say the thirteenth and fourteenth, or that the, the twentieth and twenty-first. Or, and, and, and or. Because if they win both, they're gonna be, they're gonna be playing both home games, games at home, provided they win this weekend, of course.
So I'll amend it to, um, take out January sixth or seventh. So I'll move to approve two one-day all alcohol liquor licenses to the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation for playoff games, uh, January thirteenth or fourteenth, and possible AFC championship game on, uh, January twentieth or twenty-first.
So then why would we bring it down to two, though?
'Cause you don't need the third one, they got a bye.
Oh, it's the thirteenth or the fourth, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's either one date.
I was looking at thirteen.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So you said January twenty-first or twenty-second, it's only...
I said twenty or twenty-one.
Yeah, but it's only gonna be, the AFC championship game is only on...
Oh, was that only the twenty-first?
It's on the twenty-first, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You're, you're right, thanks, thanks for pointing out this.
Uh, AFC championship game on January twenty-first.
Motion was made, second, it's been amended.
Second the amendment.
Second amendment, all those in favor?
Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of one hundred, one hundred and eighty dollars to the Council on Aging for Programs in memory of Ruth Henderson from Millie Green, Mr. and Mrs. John Henderson the third, and Spruce Creek POA Inc.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Right. Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of ninety dollars to the Council on Aging to pay for half of October's Tai Chi from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of one hundred dollars to the fire department to be turned over into the gift account from MAS Building and Bridge Inc. For an employee's, fa, employee's family member, who's Richard Lehman.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to the fire department for the gift account in memory of Richard Lehman from Charles Lehman the third.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of hundred and fifty dollars to Recreation for the gift fund donated from, donation from Cahill Lawn Care and Landscape.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five dollars to the Council on Aging for half November's Tai Chi and Jack Craig from the Friends of Foxborough Senior.
Second.
Motion made, uh, second, and the further discussion, I think it was two hundred and ninety-five dollars.
What did I say?
Two seventy-five.
Two ninety-five. Amended.
Motion made, second. Amended.
Amended to two ninety-five.
Two ninety-five, all those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of thirty-five dollars to the Council on Aging for the Lock Box Program donation from Anonymous.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of one hundred and sixty dollars to the fire department for the gift account in memory of Richard Lehman from Janet, uh, El Hakala, Norma Lehman, and Janet Abramson.
Second.
Abrahamson.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in, in the amount of fifty dollars to the Council on Aging for, for programs from Anonymous.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of one hundred dollars to the Council on Aging in memory of Ruth Henderson from Joseph Ahern, and a twenty-five dollar gift card from Louis Mulcahy, and a one hundred dollar gift card from Conway Tours for programs.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of forty dollars to the Historical Commission for book sales from Scott and Elizabeth Hall.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of forty dollars to the Historic Commission for book sales from Rebecca Center.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
In future...
Just two, two very quick things, uh, just wanted to recognize the passing of, uh, Marge Altolet and thank everyone that came out for the wake and the funeral, and Mrs. Foxborough, obviously, so... Also, uh, next Friday, you'll be getting emailed, next Saturday night, we're having a reopening, a grand opening of the Orpheum ribbon cutting ceremony with a couple exciting announcements, so, uh, if anyone wants to come, the tickets are ten dollars. So it's next Saturday, a little late notice on getting it out, but hoping to fill up the place.
What time?
Uh, six to seven for, um, kind of pre, um, wine and cheese, and then seven to nine thirty.
So this Saturday or next Saturday?
Not this Saturday, next Saturday, the sixth, so...
Good, excellent. Just wanna show, wish everybody a happy new year, hope everybody has a happy and healthy one.
Thank you, you too.
So, motion was made to adjourn, and second, any further discussion?
I'm good.
All's in favor? Good night, everybody, happy new year.